Luke Spence.
Here.
Henry Corbin.
Here.
Dan Nielsen.
Here.
Jason Sampson.
Here.
Steve Skikes.
Here.
Sandy Eric.
Here.
Before we get to the approval of the agenda, there was some discussion, we were going to remove the parking ordinance from this agenda, just in the interest of time. Wonder if I could get a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Move to park.
Second.
So council, please vote on the amended approval of the agenda.
Um, can we do a roll call? It's not set up to vote. Or do you just want that as the agenda?
Well, would you mind revising your motion so that you're approving an amended?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Okay.
I will second that.
Okay.
Okay.
amended motion.
Council, please vote. Refreshing, but it's been approved. All right. Moving on to the public hearing. We have one person, Charlie.
Just want to, I'm not sure how you guys arrived at parking, no parking, what side of the road, whatever. I just want you to look at one thing, and I don't know who did it or whatever. Eighteenth Street Place, you put the no parking signs on the side of the road that has absolutely no driveways or anything in the way. You probably took away six to eight parking spaces away from us that are on the opposite side of the road where there's no driveways. That's where the school buses park when they come to have activities and everything. I had a couple families that live there and the houses come to me and asked me, you know, how did this happen? I said, well, I don't know. I don't, I said, I'll just bring it to the council so they could take a look at it because they said now when we back out of our driveways, we have cars setting in the way. So now we have blind spots that we didn't have before. So that's it.
All right. Moving on, item A, public hearing on the proposed amendment to Nevada urban renewal. Do we have anybody that wants to speak on this? Resolution number 23 for Nevada Economic Development Council. Okay.
Oh, no. Twenty-three first, the urban.
Urban renewal.
Okay. Any discussion? Please vote. Approved. Moving on to resolution number 24. Okay, public hearing for item 24. Anybody want to speak about this?
About these.
Go ahead. Oh.
It's the, it's the public hearing for the NEDC agreement.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Matt Rungy, President of On Track Construction right here in Nevada. Also Board Chair for NEDC. We extend our gratitude for the partnership we have with the city of Nevada in supporting economic development in our community here. And in front of you, you guys should have NEDC summary of accomplishments for the last five years. Appreciate the rest of our team for putting that together here. As you consider another five-year development agreement with the NEDC, we like to share some of our accomplishments. Since 2020, we have matched the city's annual contributions to the NEDC with a total just short of $400,000 in private donations from in and around Nevada. Additionally, we have collected $68,000 in donations and gifts from the individuals and businesses to establish a legacy fund to support future long-term strategic and economic development investments in Nevada. As an organization, we have prioritized business retention and have completed 67 official industry visits in the past five years. Along with the city, we have supported and celebrated a long list of business expansions totaling an estimated $123.5 million in new capital investment and 238 new jobs. Proud to say that my company, On Track Construction, is one of those that's on the list. When it came to expanding my own business that once sat within a short walking distance of here, I knew that there was no other town I wanted to be in. Nevada was definitely and continues to be what I'd consider to be a business-friendly town. NEDC's partnership with the city has played a vital role in creating this culture. In addition to some of these achievements discussed, we as an organization have assisted Main Street Nevada in their efforts to attract and retain business in the downtown district. Along with business comes housing needs. Together with the city, we have enhanced the total number of housing opportunities in Nevada by 327 units in the past five years. It should be noted, but not in your packets, that this nears the amount of units that were generated in the prior 20 years. The city of Nevada has seen almost $100 million in total additional taxable valuation from 2019 to 2024. The NEDC has worked with our partners, including the city of Nevada, to attract an assortment of external funding to support community and economic development here in Nevada. Those are detailed out in your packets. In the last five years, we have worked with our partners at the Iowa Economic Development Authority to attract a total of over $6.7 million in state funding support for Nevada. Additionally, we have gotten almost $1.8 million in funding support highlighted in your packets from other entities and are currently negotiating over $550,000 in grants and funding support for current and upcoming projects. Together with the rest of our board and our investors, we express our thanks and are proud of these accomplishments. We look forward to continued partnership with the city. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Shannon Anderson. I live at 1321 Fourth Street. I love that list. That list makes me so proud to be in Nevada and all the wonderful things that are happening here. My ask to the council is that we wait on signing this five-year agreement. We have a new couple few people that are starting on the council here, what, January 1st? And I think if they are going to be involved in overseeing a five-year agreement, that they'd be a part of making that decision. So my ask is that we wait until after the first to make a decision on this. Thank you.
Any of the rest of the public want to make any statements? Counsel.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this agreement. That is, those are outstanding accomplishments in five years. I understand the concern looking forward, but this is an annual, we can look at it every year. So that, you know, that's not an impossibility. And they, they too have a budget to work on and need to have some things in place. I understand that as part of their planning. I also have the opportunity to look statewide, and I can tell you, there are very few communities that even begin to compare with this sort of leveraging of the resources that we've seen in this report. It's outstanding. That's my motion.
You said that we can look at it every year.
Yes, that's in the agreement.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion?
We officially close the public forum.
Close the public forum. You have the discussion for council? Please vote.
Maybe, question maybe for Jordan. I see here our obligations are, says 40,000 and then a $70,000 number per year.
Ninety thousand per year plus the, the.
Ninety-five.
Ninety-nine.
Is there a earmark for what that?
It's four. So, no, to answer that shortly, no, there's not necessarily an earmark. Past, it's been used for many different things. Yeah, some of the opportunities, some of the things that are on the list, the grants, matching grants. So several projects in the past, the city and NEDC has matched grant money for local businesses to expand or bring in. They've used that in the past. But no, there isn't anything that states in the contract that's specific for what they're supposed to use on. We do also have a contract with ABC through NEDC, which allows us to have send over here for our economic development director.
Is there anything that makes it advantageous to have a five-year agreement as opposed to something?
We've always, in the past, we've always had a five-year agreement. That's something that we've done. As Sandy stated, it is something that you can look at for the contract, but that's something that we've historically done.
I know we had a different format in the past with a percentage of TIF revenues or something like that, which makes more sense to me to have a longer term contract because that stuff all takes time and complicates things. Does that, in a straight dollar amount here, is it, doesn't really need to be done for five years?
So. Or dollar. I mean, some developments take a year, some take three, four years. So I mean, working throughout that whole entire thing. So part of the reason why we switched it up from the percentages, the calculations that we had to run on a yearly basis, the amount of time that takes. What we've seen in the past is it essentially equals out. And that's why we switched it over. So yeah, that, it wasn't anything that we had changed really aside from that percentage. But when it comes to the percentages, we did change that just because of the amount of time that it takes on. And things change on a regular basis. So I think in my email that I spoke, spoke with you is typically we will do that every five years. So if you take out that 40,000, that last check was 111,000. Essentially around that same, same cost of what we were increased.
The world economic development, five years really isn't that long. You think of how long some of these projects take to get them from, from start to completion. Since to have a longer term contract, and I think there's, from what I'm seeing, I'm not an expert, it looks like there's protections to the city. If something were to go wrong, we can get a contract.
I'd call for the question.
Please vote. Okay, approved. Moving on to item five, approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Approved. Item six, public forum. This time says I have comments from public on top to save business other than those listed on the agenda. No action may be taken. Need public comment. Don't have any cards in front of me. And I closed the public forum. Moving on to item seven, resolution number 19, a resolution approving allocated capacity agreement for wastewater services between the city of Nevada, Iowa, and Third Marketing Court.
Approved.
Second. Any discussion?
Long, 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 long.
Along the way, and I did want to just draw your attention to one thing in here that kind of has been the most recent holdup, just so everybody knows. If you look at page 30 of your materials, it's page two of the agreement talks about the effective date. Originally, this effective date was the date of signing or the date that they could discharge all of the years. It's now been updated to say the effective date is the later of the effective date of the ordinance. So we're going to have three readings on the ordinance coming up plus, plus publication, which will make it effective, or when Burt can discharge the entire load that's being anticipated under this contract. There was concern whether or not the, those timelines were going to be the same. We're, we're pretty confident based on where things are that by the beginning of year, the year, Burke will be able to discharge the waste as anticipated by this agreement, which coordinates with the effective date of the ordinance that we are going to be reading, assuming that goes through with three readings. So just wanted to bring that to your attention so you know what the holdup was on this last piece. But it sounds like things are in good shape.
All right, any other discussion? Please vote. Approved. Moving on to item eight, ordinance number 1074, an ordinance amending the code of our ordinances of the city of Nevada, Iowa, 2006 by amending provisions pertaining to sewer use charges, first reading.
I'll move to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Please vote.
Who are we missing?
No one, no.
Approved. Item nine, resolution number 25, resolution obligating funds from the Urban Renewal Tax Revenue Fund and appropriations to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment financed obligations, which shall come due in the next succeeding fiscal year.
Approved.
Second. Any discussion? Please vote. Approved. Item 10, resolution number 26, a resolution approving tax increment financing indebtedness certification and directing certification to be filed no later than December 1, 2025.
Move to approve.
Sorry.
Any discussion? Please vote. Approved. Item 11, approved pay request number two for tributary to West Indian Creek, SRF Project B from Construct Inc. in the amount of $22,344.44. Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Approved. Item 12, approved pay request number 42 for the wastewater treatment facility improvements, phase two, from Williams Brothers Construction Inc. in the amount of $348,597.41.
Approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Approved. Moving on to item 13, approved pay request number 42 for wastewater treatment facility improvements, phase three from Boomerang Corp. in the amount of $0.
Move to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Please vote. Approved. Item 14, discussion of potential action regarding campaign complaints. Have one card on this, Melissa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight because I think this is a serious issue that deserves attention. The words and actions of our elected officials carry influence, and how we use them matters. I want to be clear, this is not about the election itself. I am not questioning the validity of the election or its results. I would have brought this forward regardless of the outcome. In this case, Councilmember Spence made a public statement from his official city council page and shared that post to several public forums, stating that candidates violated federal law. Those statements were presented as fact, yet Mr. Spence is not an attorney, nor is he an expert in FCC regulations. When something like this is shared from an official page, it gives the impression that it is endorsed by the city. That crosses an important line. Not only is this accusation damaging to myself, but it could have ramifications for the boards and organizations that I serve, many which are federally funded. I have not done anything to give Mr. Spence a reason to question my integrity, or to assume I would have federally illegally means to win an election. He was corrected on those campaigns in question, followed by, he was corrected that the campaigns in question followed the regular guidelines, yet he doubled down insisting he was right, and even stating that he wanted to level the playing field, all in a very public and negative forum. Then he proceeded to present so-called evidence that he had collected himself, further misleading the public and attempting to validate a false claim. When false information is spread, it doesn't hurt just one person. It divides neighbors and damages the sense of community that Nevada is known for. We all deserve to trust that our local leaders will use their words to inform, not to inflame. This kind of behavior erodes public trust and damages the city's credibility. Statements made by an elected official are perceived as factual, and the community take them at face value. That kind of influence has real consequences. When statements like that are made by someone in a position of authority, they carry extra weight and can expose the city to reputational harm or even legal claims, which could ultimately cost taxpayers in the event of a lawsuit or a legal action. Beyond that, potential partnerships, grants, and future collaborations could also be negatively affected if the city is perceived as acting in ways that undermine its credibility or fail to follow expected protocols. Every elected official represents the city in both words and actions, whether online, in a public meeting, or in the community. That carries a responsibility to act in the best interest of the city and to speak in a way that reflects the standards you ask of others. This council has a duty to uphold that city's, to uphold the city's credibility and to protect it from unnecessary risk. That responsibility belongs to each one of you. To look out for the community as a whole and to ensure your fellow council members conduct themselves with the integrity and professionalism. My hope is that this situation encourages reflection and leads in to positive action. I'm asking the council to consider two things. First, a public apology and retraction from Councilmember Spence to myself and Barb Mittman. Second, the creation of a clear social media policy for current and future council members with regular trainings to ensure understanding and reinforce accountability. You can disagree on politics or policies and opinions, but how you conduct yourself should always reflect accurate respect and integrity. I believe these steps would provide a constructive way to move forward, ensuring accountability and transparency within our local government while helping to prevent future issues that protect both the city and its residents. One of the clearest signs of a healthy governing body is humility, the ability to acknowledge mistakes, learn from them, and move forward together in service of our community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Any other member of the public want to speak to this?
Name's Austin Good. I live at 311 Maple Avenue. So I've had a little bit of visibility on this matter. I understand that Melissa, a member of this community, has expressed concern and has asked the council to ask on statements suggesting illegal conduct. However, it is not the council's authority, the, the council's authority does not extend to adjudicating or punishing such claims if not met with an ethics code violation or code of conduct. Matters involving any illegal actions or defamation are best handled by the state or other judicial bodies with proper investigative powers and due process safeguards. Therefore, I believe it would be appropriate to refer this issue to the relevant state authority, and the council will abstain from taking punitive action to ensure fairness and impartiality to the situation. If she pursues this further, the burden of proof will fall to her campaign to prove that she was targeted and was within full means of the law of the FCC that they have stated. If the state would find any wrongdoing on either side, I would ask the council to amend the code of ethics accordingly. That's all I have.
Anybody else from the public? Discussion for the council.
Oh, I think we have two, and I asked that we put this on the agenda, not so we can embarrass Mr. Spence. I don't. But I think we have two things. One, we need to determine is there action the city has to take in this case? And I think we would refer that to Aaron. So we're looking at direction of, you know, to cover our base, protect the city's liability in this matter. The thing I'm really interested in is taking another look at our social media policy. We did have one from 2020, as the president of the council. I read it when I got on I read it when I got on the council and I was actually told by council members at the time, don't post anything on social media. So for many years I didn't put anything on. I think that times have changed in the five years that since we passed the original social media policy, it focuses mainly on the city's use of social media, not necessarily on how council members should interact with the public. Our current push for greater transparency, and I think that people tend to use social media as a news platform anymore. We should definitively define how council members should and should not use social media, how their pages should look or not look. Just make sure that we're all kind of on the same page. I don't want to discourage interaction with the public as part of this. I think it's important that we find a way to use social media and affect a way to get the word out, but that's that's probably the main thing I'm interested in here is let's uh let's take a look at this and figure out if we can do better in the future.
First, Aaron, is there anything legal?
Yeah, so from the from a legal standpoint, Mr. Mr. Good, I agree with your sentiments. I we have a state agency that this is their job, Campaign and Ethics Board. And so I would recommend to the city that that we really don't have jurisdiction to determine whether or not there was a a campaign violation. You can certainly look at your SOPs and see if you think there was any violations of the SOPs. I've I've gone through those and and don't see anything there. But I do think from a legal standpoint, we received a complaint and and we can forward that along to the Campaign and Ethics Board and they can do the investigation. I don't think it's a good use of city resources to go through that investigation here at your level and and with my fees, because we don't have jurisdiction to do anything with it. I think the biggest point here is the social media policy. I think that needs to to have a good look. I think it needs to be updated. We have seen throughout the many communities that we represent, we've seen similar issues, and so I think it's a consistent problem of just how are we representing, how are you representing yourselves when you're campaigning? How do you represent yourself as a voice of this council but not the governing body itself? And so I do think that we need to be very clear in in how we have that in policy for you.
Anybody else?
Are we providing direction then to review that policy as a council?
I guess that's what, for myself, kind of looking at our social media policy and the fact it's only two pages, really dive into that more. I'd kind of like to see us start to workshop that now a little bit, looking at what other communities have done, maybe see if there are some communities out there that have good examples of guidebooks or handbooks out there. I think, you know, since this was written five years ago, a lot has changed in five years on social media, and I think having those resources, guidelines, examples, I think that's critical. So I'd really like to start seeing us look at what other communities are doing right now, look at other guidelines, handbooks, and maybe start to develop. I don't know if that's a special workshop session or what that is, but I think we need to start working on that and moving forward here with it.
Anyone else?
I would just agree with Henry. I think it's timely as we bring on two new council members too that have not only this kind of policy, but all of our, taking a look at all of the things that are guidance for us as council members and get a good review and orientation and workshop for all of us to get back on track.
Any other comments? Oh. Motion to workshop social media?
I don't know that we need a motion on that. I think we've got direction. Jordan and I can start pulling together some materials and examples, and then I think we we schedule that for a future work session.
So as far as referring this to I E C B, then is that a step that we take as the council or is that something that Ms. Mieschek would need to pursue?
Well, I think that's a I think that's a question. I don't know if you are planning on planning on turning this over to the board. If not, I do think there's probably an obligation for the council to do that, but I I would suggest it is probably better coming from the complainant.
My intention is not to elevate this to the state level because I don't want that. I just want some sort of policy in place for future and an apology. It was never my intention to get anybody in trouble. I just want, make sure that this is there's some sort of protection moving forward.
Anyone else? All right. Moving on to item fifteen. Ordinance number ten seventy and ordinance amending chapter fifty of the Nevada Municipal Code, Nuisance Abatement Procedure to declare storage uses on the first floor of multi-story buildings in the downtown corridor district, a public nuisance, first reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Shane? You gotta go to the booking.
I feel like we talked about this a month or two ago. And I mean, this was specifically for Belinda. Is that that's her name, right, Belinda? You guys specifically were going after her for this. She's already cried uncle. She's leaving town. Andy made a really good talk about property rights. I don't know why we're back here again.
Back here again, because that's what we told them to do, spring it back in November.
But she 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 moved, right?
Anyone else?
Ray, have you had a chance to look at, are the properties that we were talking about last time still in the same condition at all?
Yeah, Ray Reynolds fire chief. I think I think the plan is changing every week. I don't have any information that she's leaving. In fact, there's another ordinance violation. She's now sleeping in that location. So there's ordinance prohibiting sleeping residing on first floor in the downtown corridor. She, we have court coming up December seventeenth on the fire code violations, so this is not I think there's ordinance specifically just trying to prevent this from being the common in our downtown area. Our downtown corridor is not really designed for storage occupancies. Those buildings are not designed for storage occupancies.
Has this ever come up before?
No, I, not that I know of. I don't know anybody that's I mean, I'm sure there's stuff where people have had a wood shop or something like that in the downtown corridor, but not storage to this level. That that's a separate issue from this ordinance. That's a fire code issue that we're dealing with. But the ordinance itself is for turning a mercantile occupancy into a S occupancy without proper fire code ratings and stuff like that. Those buildings are not designed for the fuel load that's in in that occupancy, so.
So it's not unfair to say that we are doing this specifically for this individual.
I don't know why. I I mean, I think this is for the whole downtown corridor.
But it's never come up before.
This actually had come up previously when we were talking about the US Bank Building at the time when it was vacant. This did come up. We had discussed it as a council and the action was never taken, but this is not the first time this has come up.
Well, we just won't know what Ray said.
Yeah, yeah. So our we have two issues going on. One is the change of occupancy downtown without any meeting of the fire code, and then we have the fire code issue itself that is specifically related to Ms. Gavone Martin, and that's an issue for the court.
Any other discussion? Andy?
Andy Kelly, thirteen twenty-two fourth of. The only thing I have to say about it is it sounds like we're dealing with it with the tools we already have in place, that they're adequate. And I've said before, and and if it goes through, that's that is what it is. I don't like writing more ordinances, especially if we're, it sounds like we have a court date, we have got violations, that's being dealt with with the tools we have in place already. I don't like putting more restrictions on people's property. I understand where the chief is coming from. But it it sounds like we've got a direction for, we've got a court, we've got change of use and and not meeting code in place already. We're just looking at it more, and I have a bit of a problem with that.
Anyone else?
Ray, when we talk about visible interior storage, is that I I remember from a couple of months ago, we were talking how there's only so many buildings where you can look through the window and be able to see what's going on there, so.
So so in my world, in the fire code world, the ability to look through a window or not doesn't have any factor on it. I think this one has intentionally been done so that you don't look in the window and see the level of, but that's their individual choice. So whether they cover it up or not is not really the question. I think it's the application of putting stuff in the building to the point where it changes its occupancy. I know originally there was some discussion of being a legitimate business. I don't, I don't know that that's a reality, but certainly that's her prerogative to try and do that. But in the interim, we now have the basement full, the first floor floo- first floor full, and then we have occupancies that reside above that storage. So that's really the concern and like Councilman-elect Kelly said that there is a process that's taking place for the fire code violation. I think we need to look long term at what happens if three more people decide that I don't have or I'm getting foreclosed, so I'm going to go downtown and rent a space for five hundred dollars and throw everything in there. So I think that's really the heart of the issue.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, um, I appreciate what Mr. Kelly says. I think you should be able to, you know, use your building for whatever you want to use it for, but you should not be allowed to do that at the expense of creating a fire hazard for your neighbors, your other tenants in the building. It's true in this case, it sounds like we were able to take some action. Perhaps it'll drive some action, perhaps it won't. But I think we should be proactive. These old buildings are irreplaceable. I think there is an example in, I believe, Greenfield where an entire, you know, half a block burned down. That's the situation we'd be looking at here if this thing went up. Especially, you know, if someone is actually living in there, you know, probably cooking in there, it just gives me nightmares to think what could potentially happen, and if we don't take action here and be proactive, that would be a mistake.
Also think the landowners need to take some owners of this themselves, because everyone's that rent this space out. What can and cannot be done in those places. I have a hard time telling people also, just like Amy said, what they can and cannot be, just like our storage bins are like all the should be changed. I have a hard time voting for that because it's a it's a container. It looks better than probably my shed does right now. It's just a piece of siding. But just, I don't, I hate telling anybody what to do with the property. Paying up in taxes or anything.
Any other discussion? Okay, please vote. Passed. Item number sixteen, ordinance number ten seventy-one and ordinance amending chapter one forty-five of the Nevada Municipal Code, Dangerous Buildings With Regards to Storage Uses, which may create a first fire hazard, first reading.
I'll move to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Please vote. Approved. Moving on to item seventeen, ordinance number ten seventy-two and ordinance amending chapter one sixty-five of the Nevada Municipal Code, Land Development Zoning Regulations to prohibit storage uses on first floor of multi-story buildings in the downtown corridor district, first reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Passed. Item eighteen, ordinance number ten, oh, sorry, that's only four. Item nineteen. Discussion and appropriate follow-up regarding device retailer license application from Sundown Liquor.
You should have everything referenced this, but if you guys have questions, I'll answer it. One thing I did want to point out on my recommendation, on the eighteenth of July, they submitted the application to the state. As no communication was sent to the city, there's no requirement from them per se, but also that system doesn't automatically notify us. So with tobacco licenses and such, usually the the vendors reaching out or Donna's tracking on that. There's no obligation to do that either way, so the the lack of communication shouldn't be considered like a slight on them in any way.
You say there was all incidents.
We routinely do compliance checks for facilities that are licensed to sell tobacco and alcohol. Every store in the city that has a license has that check done. There have been two failed compliance checks at that location in the last twelve months.
Did more veto, what?
One was tobacco, one was alcohol. There's no escalating penalties for tobacco sales. It's just a fine. Alcohol's different, A V D tracks that, and there's a different level of administrative action that's taken based off the the number of violations. They've had one which doesn't really allow us to do any kind of administrative action.
Were you able to notify them that we were asking if they'd be here?
Donna communicated with them via email, and I believe they called into City Hall today to ask about this being on there, and we're advised it was council agenda and that they were welcome to come.
Anybody here from Sundown? Is there any like age limit to solos through?
You have to be twenty-one in order to burst some. If they're going to be displayed in the store, the store would have to ensure that anyone under the age of twenty-one is not allowed to enter or has to be concealed, yes.
Is there any legally permissible way these items would be used other than to?
The intent is for the use of smoking and tobacco. This is pretty much for like a glass pipe that could be used to put a a leafy material in and heat to inhale the the fumes of. Tobacco is a leafy material it could be used for. The other style are water-filtered bongs, so glass material that again you heat a leafy substance such as tobacco and the water filters and you get the the ability to inhale that same way. So any leafy material can be used in the product. In my experience in law enforcement, I've never seen anybody use it for tobacco. I've seen it used for marijuana consumption. If you, some of the use it for tobacco. I've seen it used for marijuana consumption. Um, if you, some of the charts in the, um, the references that I put in there also shows the percentages of people who use tobacco and how they use it, people who use marijuana and how they use it. Um, shows a high probability of use for marijuana, but does not show a high probability use for tobacco.
Well, as you could say to display it.
The last compliance check failure? I believe that would be tobacco. Um, it's been a couple of months ago. The tobacco and alcohol are offset by, by a few months and, um, I believe tobacco is the most recent one.
Very negative that we can experience if we say no to this.
So it's relatively new, um, Senate file. Uh, it was passed January one. From my conversations with alcohol, um, beverage division. It was written with the principle of the cities are able to pass or deny based off what they feel comfortable with and what kind of, um, culture they want in their cities. I have reached out to other cities, um, Mason City as example. They've denied this three times. There's been no legal recourse or any kind of action taken by the permit, permittee. So to my knowledge and research I've been able to do, there's no legal recourse if we deny it.
I would agree with chief. I mean, it is relatively new, starting this year. Um, the, the statute language reads as if the city may approve or deny these types of permits. And so um, it definitely reads very differently than it does for our tobacco licensing, which reads that you shall approve if it meets certain criteria. So I think from that perspective, um, the legislatures were, their intent was to make it an option for the cities to approve or deny those. Um, other cities that we represent have denied similar permits and we've not seen any challenges so far. Uh, but can't represent that won't happen. You could be the first, but, um, but we haven't seen those yet.
Yeah, I move that we deny the permit request. Any other discussion? Please vote.
And an I is to deny. I is to deny. Sandy clicked the wrong button.
Can you just click I?
I clicked nay because I was saying no, but fix me up.
Would you like to switch your votes?
Yes, I will. Well, darn it.
No, but I think we're good.
Okay, so it's, it's been denied. Moving on to the awards. Chief, or actually Ryan, you got anything for us?
I'm good. If you guys have questions.
I'm good. Thank you.
Marley's? Let's see that. Rhonda?
I'm good unless anyone has any questions.
Ray?
I'm good. Thank you, Mayor.
Eric here.
No, it's not here.
It's not good.
That was Brian.
Anything from council?
No, we have a budget meeting after this. So I'll pass. And if you have any questions about my report, I'd be happy to answer them.
Nothing here. All right.
I'll make a move and motion to adjourn.
All in favor?